Coming tonight to the Blackhawk School District Board of School Directors Voting Session for September seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen. If we could have everybody rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mark breaker.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Play a roll, please.
Mr. Pataglia.
Here.
Mrs. Gehring.
Here.
Mr. Hackathon.
Here.
Mrs. Helson.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Present.
Dr. McCosey.
Here.
Mr. Morrison.
Here.
Mr. Schaefer.
Here.
Mrs. Ziegler.
Here.
And our student rep, Mrs. Yalla.
Here.
You have nine of nine, sir.
Thank you. The purpose of videotaping a meeting is for public information. The opinions expressed by any member of the public do not necessarily reflect the view or opinion of the Blackhawk School District Board of School Directors and are solely that of the speaker. The Blackhawk School District Board of School Directors hereby expressly disclaims any and all responsibility or liability for any false, defamatory, or slanderous statements expressed by the speaker. Any unauthorized rebroadcasting of any video, audio, or still image of the video recording of the meeting is strictly forbidden without the written permission of the Blackhawk School District Board of School Directors. There was not an executive session held prior to tonight's meeting. We'll move on to one point six, which is the approval of the agenda and amendments. There were two, or we'll say, three-plus items added. The first two are under the Personnel Committee. Its approval is recommended for the following substitutes: Genevieve Lincheck, a nurse, and then approval is recommended to accept the resignation of Dana Cummings, cafeteria worker effective September thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. And then, under Education Committee, there were four field trips added. So if I can, do I have a motion to approve the changes to the agenda?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Do I have a second?
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Pataglia. Should we just all in favor or what?
You can go.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, we will move on. Public Relations and Communications, Mrs. Ziegler.
Blackhawk is very proud of our students' achievements, and we encourage the extracurricular activities to happen in each grade. Please visit each school's website for updates and happenings in our building. Item two point one, congratulations to Jack Hawall for being selected September Student of the Month by the Rotary Club.
All right, thank you. Public has the opportunity to address the board this time on agenda items. I know at the last meeting, we kind of switched around a little bit, but if there are any comments on Northwestern, since it's not an agenda item, we'll just ask for you to stop or hold any kind of comments till the end of the meeting. Go ahead. Nope.
So, we're not going to make a motion this time to allow Northwestern comments in the beginning?
No, we're going to just do it at the end. We're going to follow the normal agenda.
It should be.
It should be quick. We're going to just go through the voting section. We had the majority of the discussion at the last meeting, so I would expect it to be, you know, fairly quick to get to that.
Okay, because we have parents here who intend to speak who can't stay too late, so I just want to make that point that they get to speak.
Okay.
Okay.
Anyone else from the public on any agenda items? All right, moving on. We have a presentation by Eccles Architecture regarding required projects based on the refunding portion of the bond refinancing with possible work to include high school entry, high school elevator, elevator issues, and other appropriate infrastructure updates. Mr. Spazza.
Good evening. I gave Dr. Postapak a little handout here for the board. I'm going to review this quickly. He had asked me to put this together as a way of just walking through the timeline. We had a conference call a week or so ago with your bond counsel and your financial advisor. You intend to refinance bonds. That refinancing will result in proceeds from the refinancing of about seven hundred and ninety thousand dollars, which can be used for capital projects. The anticipated refinancing is scheduled for the end of this month. The proceeds will be available shortly after that. By law, five percent of the proceeds have to be spent within six months of refinancing. For that amount, we're looking at approximately thirty-nine thousand, six hundred dollars. And I believe eighty-five percent of the proceeds have to be spent within three years of the refinancing. The proposed projects that would be funded with this refinancing were considered as part of the Community Advisory Committee study, and they are focused on the high school. Would be developing a secure entrance, relocating and altering the office. We've estimated that in the study have a range between seven fifty and a million dollars, seven hundred and fifty thousand and a million. So that would be the first project. Some elevator upgrades, which are estimated in cost between sixty to eighty thousand. There's also an idea of either applying security film to the existing glass on the building, which would prohibit someone from breaking out the glass. It would essentially hold the glass in frame and be a deterrent to detain or slow down an intruder. As an alternate to that, I suggest that we all look at just replacing the glass with new laminated glass, and then choose which option is more, most economical. And then, if there's some additional money available, if these estimates are conservative, there may be some other capital projects that the board directs. Our proposal for architectural and engineering fees for the renovation work associated with the office and the secure entrance would be seven percent of the construction cost. That was the same as we quoted for the Northwestern project when we had a contract for that. We were also asked to put together a price for full-time project representation. This would be to put an employee on site during construction forty hours a week. And so we have a proposal for that of four percent of the construction cost. The A D fee, based on the estimates, for the design and bidding, the bidding documents, would be able to be spent in the next six months, and that would cover that requirement to spend the five percent. So the timeline we're looking at is the start, October first. We have about six months to design the project, to prepare bidding documents, and then a month of bidding in April of two thousand and twenty, a month for the board to analyze bids and award contracts, that would be May of this coming year, and then three months of construction, June, July, August, with a project closeout in September of two thousand and twenty. So your next steps would be for authorize us to put together an agreement that you might approve, to engage us to begin the design, to continue with closing on the refinancing, and then if you choose to move forward, we would schedule a kickoff meeting and begin the design with the administration. Are there any questions on that timeline or any of those tasks?
I guess I have one, and you might not be able to answer this, but I'd be talking to Postapak advances. Under the proposed A D fees for the project, the optional full-time project representation, is that more of an owner's rep or is that more of a project manager, that role?
I normally ask for projects of this size. It's not that it's overly large or scope and sequence. The architect to provide that because I think they can manage the contractors. If you were talking more of a large-scale system, I would say we would have an owner's rep. In this case, it would be coming out of the Eccles firm.
So this is more of a project?
This is a project manager for Eccles, correct. Because I don't believe the scope of this is so large that an owner's rep would be warranted. For example, if it were a massive, you know, building upgrade, you know, project, you may want an owner's rep to mediate between the architect and the contractors.
Okay.
But in this case, I don't. This would be, you know, construction. Correct. Just this construction experience that would be onsite forty hours a week and would be an interface, basically doing liaison between the district and the architect and the contractors. And if I can also add, we would want somebody, because we're talking a timeline of three months, they need to hold the contractors to the timeline, and that needs to be somebody who's constantly with that group of people, making sure they meet those deadlines, because we have to open school.
Yeah.
And we do not want to delay that process because somebody didn't meet deadline. And that's why I would ask that we work with somebody who can, you know, legitimately evaluate that work and report to us.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Any other?
Yeah. How reasonable is it to get some cost estimates for us in the next month? Because just reading this offhand, it seems like we're going to blow through that seven hundred and ninety thousand dollars of proceeds.
We can't hear you.
Well, the question was how reasonable is it for us to revisit these prices once we actually start designing? And as part of our schematic design phase services, we would work with the administration and the board to create an architectural program. That would be the list of goals and objectives you have for the office relocation. And that might entail less work than what was anticipated in the study or more. But in conjunction with, once we get a design that is agreeable to the district, we would prepare an estimate at that phase, and you would know then what the design, you know, a better handle on what the costs are. These costs that were part of the study were developed from rule of thumb, cost per square foot, and there was actually no design done. We looked at the area that would be altered. We have experience to know that you can look at between a hundred and fifty and two hundred dollars a square foot historically, and that's how we arrived at that. Once we actually start designing, we will know where, you know, what walls, what mechanical systems are affected, and so that price can be more fine-tuned.
Well, regardless, it seems like we're going to go beyond the seven hundred and ninety thousand dollars of proceeds, so I'm asking, do you anticipate borrowing a bunch of money?
I don't, I anticipate doing what the district directs me to do. I don't know.
Well, right here it says, okay, seven hundred and fifty to one million, just for the secure entrance. You have seven hundred and ninety thousand in proceeds, okay? You had the elevator estimate, you got eighty thousand already going over that seven hundred and ninety. So I'm asking, yeah, are you planning on borrowing money?
No, I'd say at this point in time, no, there is no plan to borrow money. I think if we were, you know, depending on it, it would come out of the capital or the general fund?
Capital.
Capital.
Our capital fund right now has, we, last year we assigned that. There's seven hundred and some thousand already in that capital fund.
Okay.
If you look at, if you look at your eye, you'll see there's seven hundred. I don't even have my eye.
So basically, based on the, based on the money that we'll receive from the refinancing and closing, and then the money that's in the capital fund, you know, that's where the board will decide, you know, Eccles will come to us, and then we can say, hey, we'll do all of this, we only want to do this one project. So that's what the discussion will be once we get those proposals back. Any, any other questions at this time for Mr. Spazza?
One of the things that I guess has been on my mind, I was thinking I wouldn't bring it up, but I just, I don't know if this is the time to bring it up or not, because most of these upgrades look like they're safety-related, which is great because we need to upgrade our schools for safety. I was thinking, there would be CAC, one of the things that we've looked at is, this room that we're in, obviously, it wouldn't be something that would be, we would be doing now, but sometime in the future. I'm just curious, like, if you look around, this auditorium, seats are broken, the rug is, you know, things could be redone in here. We just redid the stage, we just had it repainted. Is that something that we could include, just, you know, what it would cost to, you know, do some maybe minor upgrades, just so we know what we're looking at even in the future? Is that something that we could consider at this time, too?
Would that be done through Eccles or is that?
We, I believe, speaking, Dave, I'm not going to speak for you, but I believe when we had spoken before, the documents put together can indicate the required portion of the captured entrance for the high school. We discussed the accessibility of the elevator and its need to be very reliable. And then finally, if we were talking about upgrades to the windows, make them more secure, what might that cost, and other projects that the board would identify to examine. Is that correct? And then the board could determine what those other projects would be, because the refunding portion describes the captured entrance. It doesn't describe what to do other than other upgrades as appropriate for the high school. Okay, so that leaves you some. You could identify another project if you. Leeways to decide what to do beyond improving security. If you had enough funds on hand and had the desire to spend them, you could have worked in the auditorium. If you look at the Community Advisory Study, there's a section under the midterm probable cost estimates for a high school. There's a whole section on the auditorium, and it talks about individual components such as the seating, the theatrical lighting, ADA accessibility, a sound reinforcement system, and there's a price determined for each of those components. You could do some of them, all of them, none of them, depending on what funds were available. So you're saying in the document, if the board could so choose to identify what might upgrades to this facility we're sitting in now be, you could provide some estimates based upon that document? Yes. I mean, that would be a place to start, and then if you decide you want more information on that, or, you know, more accurate, actual, you know, come up with a design for the replacement of these components, those could be, those estimates could be more fine-tuned or tailored to what you're proposing to do.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. I just, I've been thinking about that. This whole area really has been neglected, and it's one of the largest publicly used facilities in our district with all the concerts and things that happen here, so thank you for, and lighting and stuff.
Any other questions?
Yes. Well, Dave, when you submit ideas, plans, the captured entrance, is it going to be just one basic one, or more than one with some little options if we, away we go?
We would suggest some solution to start based on the program, but we're certainly willing to, if we miss the mark at the first try, there will be a reiteration of it and maybe another. We'll work till that design is satisfactory to the district's needs. So there may be, there may be different solutions that have different price points. I'm hoping that if you could find a more economical way to do this, if it was still satisfied your needs, we'd certainly be willing to work to that end. But we haven't, you know, really started to design anything, and we haven't really sat down with the administration to talk about ideas and needs the administration sees for that. You know your operations better than we do, so we need to communicate and collaborate on that so we can come up with some options for you.
Did I hear you say, I thought I heard this, that with the captured entrance, it would be a reconfiguration of the school office? Is that, did I hear you say that?
I believe that was the thought, was to make alterations to the office so that it could have a, an exterior exposure so that the office could see people approaching, you know? The secure vestibule would be located in a way that you could only enter the office without entering the school during school hours when the main doors, your exits, were locked down.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to Finance Committee, Dr. McCosey.
Approval is recommended. Approval is recommended for items three point one through three point four. Three point one, approval is recommended for the financial report for August. Three point two, approval is recommended for payment bills. Fund ten, general fund, seventy-one thousand, one fifty-six and six cents for eighteen, nineteen school year. Three hundred and seventy-seven thousand, six seventy-six and ninety-eight cents for nineteen, twenty. Fund thirty-two, the capital projects fund, seventeen thousand, five hundred and forty-four dollars, bagged, zero. Fund fifty-one, the cafeteria fund, thirteen thousand, four thirty-one, one forty-eight cents. Fund sixty-six is the health fund, payroll for August, one million, one hundred and three thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars and fifty-five cents. Three point three, approval is recommended for the athletic activity accounts. Three point four, approval is recommended for the sale of property identified as tax parts, one hundred and fifty-seven, oh thirty-three, oh one oh one, point oh 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 for the repository of unsold property to Sherman Hosteller for the balance and other fees.
You said move?
Yes.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Hackathon.
Yes.
Mrs. Helson.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Dr. McCosey.
Yes.
Mr. Morrison.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mrs. Ziegler.
Yes.
Mr. Pataglia.
Yes.
Mrs. Gehring.
Yes.
Mr. Hackathon.
Yes.
Mrs. Helson.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Education Committee, Mrs. Ziegler.
Approval is recommended for items five point one through five point four. I so move.
Thank you. Do I have a second, please?
One second.
Thank you, Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Dr. McCosey.
Yes.
Mr. Morrison.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mrs. Ziegler.
Yes.
Mr. Pataglia.
Yes.
Mrs. Gehring.
Yes.
Mr. Hackathon.
Yes.
Mrs. Helson.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Education Committee, Mrs. Ziegler.
Approval is recommended for items five point one through five point four. I so move.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Jones. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Dr. McCosey.
Yes.
Mr. Morrison.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mrs. Ziegler.
Yes.
Mr. Pataglia.
Yes.
Mrs. Gehring.
Yes.
Mr. Hackathon.
Yes.
Mrs. Helson.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Dr. McCosey.
Yes.
Five, eight, and five, four, going five, one. The motion passes.
Thank you. Buildings, Grounds, Building and Grounds Real Estate, Mrs. Gehring.
No report.
Thank you.
Excuse me, one second. Could we, could we make sure this goes on the website?
Yes, the Eccles.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right, Athletics Committee, Mr. Jones.
Approval is recommended for item seven point one. I so move.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Pataglia, thank you. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mrs. Ziegler.
Yes.
Mr. Pataglia.
Yes.
Mrs. Gehring.
Yes.
Mr. Hackathon.
Yes.
Mrs. Helson.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Dr. McCosey.
Yes.
And Mr. Morrison.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Administrative Liaison, Mr. Morrison.
No report.
Thank you. Transportation Committee, Mr. Pataglia.
Approval is recommended for items nine point one and nine point two. I so move.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Jones, thank you. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Ziegler.
Yes.
Mr. Pataglia.
Yes.
Mrs. Gehring.
Yes.
Mr. Hackathon.
Yes.
Mrs. Helson.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Dr. McCosey.
Yes.
Mr. Morrison.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Food Service Committee, Mr. Jones.
No report.
Thank you. Negotiations Committee, Mr. Morrison.
No report.
Thank you. Policy Committee, Mrs. Ziegler.
Yes, this is the second reading of the following amended policies. A, two ten point one, B, three fifty-one, C, four fifty-one, and D, five fifty-one. Please see last week's backup. Yes. I just want to tell the public that this is some medicinal marijuana policies for our students and for our employees that the administration felt that we needed to update at this time, so that is what we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Staff Enrichment, Mr. Jones.
Approval is recommended for item thirteen point one.
You said move?
I so move.
Thank you. Do I have a second, please?
One second.
Thank you, Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Pataglia.
Yes.
Mrs. Gehring.
Yes.
Mr. Hackathon.
Yes.
Mrs. Helson.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Dr. McCosey.
No.
Mr. Morrison.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mrs. Ziegler.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Beaver County Career and Technology, Mr. Jones.
No report.
Thank you. Intermediate Unit, Mr. Jones.
No report.
Thank you. T S B A Legislative Committee, Mrs. Ziegler.
Just keep watching the Charter School Initiative, and there's been some discussion at Harrisburg starting up, so pay attention to that.
All right, thank you very much. And we'll move on to additional business. Any visitors? And we'll ask if you kind of have somewhere to be. Come up first.
Hello.
Hello.
Abby Seymour, West Meathville. I wanted to keep this as informal as possible. I'm not here to deliver statistics or a fancy speech. I simply want to share two personal experiences regarding Northwestern. My son, Kayden, attended Northwestern through kindergarten. The years would have been two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and sixteen. He was sick a majority of this year. Please understand, even though he was sick, he was not sickly. He was a normal little boy. He ran, played, danced, laughed, and carried on like any little boy should. During the course of this year, Kayden was diagnosed with multiple illnesses, including avias, noroviruses, upper respiratory infections, and influenza. This is just to name a few. There were days that he would get off the bus and throw up, or take an after-school nap and wake up with a random fever. This did not make sense to me, and it did not make sense to my husband. We were actually starting to blame our home. Looking at him, he had very dark circles around his eyes, so we knew that it was probably allergy-related, but we didn't know where it was coming from. We had our air ducts cleaned. I bought him an air purifier. We ran a pool mist humidifier twenty-four seven in his room. I used to walk around my home and spray my floors and walls with bleach water. I washed his clothes and dress. I sprayed our furnace motors with Bactrovan daily and changed them every three weeks. Nothing was helping. As a parent, your mind goes to the darkest place. Is there something more going on? Is there a bigger picture? Do we need to see a specialist? We decided to take him to an allergy doctor. They performed a skin prick test, which determined that he was allergic to ashtray, golden rod, and gold. His doctor suggested that I start a lock. We ran a PMS humidifier 24/7 in his room. I used to walk around my home and spray my floors and walls with bleach water. I washed his clothes and dress. I sprayed our furnace motors with Bactroban daily and changed them every three weeks. Nothing was helping. As a parent, your mind goes to the darkest place. Is there something more going on? Is there a bigger picture? Do we need to see a specialist? We decided to take him to an allergy doctor. They performed a skin prick test which determined that he was allergic to ashtray, golden rod, and mold. His doctor suggested that I start a lock. Once I started a lock, this was the first I began to notice the pattern. On weekends, he was fine. On holiday breaks, he was fine. On random school days, he was not. A few months later, the potential health issues at Northwestern came to light. It all made sense. My six-year-old, perfect little boy, was getting sick from his school. I attended every board meeting relating to Northwestern. I asked Dr. Curber and the board to shut down the school immediately. This did not happen and my son had to continue to finish out the school year sick. Do you know what that feels like as a mother? Sending your six-year-old into a building that you knew was making him sick and not being able to do anything about it? The second issue I want to talk about at Northwestern was safety. Kaden plays football for the Blackhawk Little Cougars. His very first year was that same year and it was spent on the feces-covered soda at Northwestern. It was October of 2015. We were playing Storox. Storox beat us. They beat us pretty bad, actually. There was an unwellly Storox parent on our side of the field. They were acting out, yelling obscenities, and being downright belligerent. There were children present, so a Blackhawk parent had asked the Storox parent to please stop swearing and to leave the field. The issue escalated and looked as if it was going to turn physical. Because of this, the police were called. 25 minutes later, the state police showed up. 25 minutes. We were in a wide-open rural space with a couple hundred people, many of them being children. What if this parent would have had a weapon? A 25-minute response time would have been catastrophic. Board, I am asking you as a parent and as a resident of the Blackhawk community to please, please, please keep Northwestern closed permanently. The health and safety of our children, it's death or priceless. There is no brand out there, regardless of dollar amount, that can compensate for their well-being. In turn, I would like to share with you a picture of Kaden. This is my son and this is from his kindergarten year. And I just would like to show you all what I saw more often than not when this child got off the bus. May I bring it up to you?
Yes.
Thank you.
How has he been since?
He's fine. He's in fourth grade now. He's at Biz. I invite any of you to meet him. He's amazing and he is perfectly healthy.
Do I have any other visitors that would like to address the board this time?
My name is Melissa Green in South Beaver Township. As I stated in the last meeting, I have three children currently enrolled in the district. I would like to ask the board for an assurance that the permanent closing of Northwestern will be on the agenda at the next meeting, October 8, 2019, for discussion and on the October 15, 2019, agenda for board vote. According to my calculations, 90 days from the public hearing is October 7, 2019. Therefore, adding it to the agenda for October 15 with a vote October... I'm sorry, adding it to the agenda the 8th with a vote on the 15th puts us well within our 90 days.
Yes, it will be on the agenda.
100%.
Yes.
Finally, I would like to present these 10 letters from other families in the district who also feel that Northwestern should be permanently closed but were unable to be here today. The letters contain their email addresses so that you can reach out to them with any questions that you may have. I am also giving you a copy of my speech from the last meeting, September 10, to remind you and reiterate why the building needs closed permanently and properly. May I give you my letters?
Sure, thank you. All right, any other visitors?
My name is Dave Sutton. 45-year resident, taxpayer, parent, and grandparent of kids that went through Blackhawk School. All of them went through Northwest School. Maybe we were just lucky, I don't know. None of our, none of our children had any of the symptoms. And I feel bad for anybody whose child didn't have that, does have it, or does have that problem from Northwest. We were just lucky, I guess. But also, there are hundreds of other students that could probably come before this panel and say that they had no ill effects of going Northwest School. And we went football games, basketball games, everything at Northwest and luckily we came on with no problems. The only thing I wanted to present was some information I had about mold study that was done at Northwest in February of 2016. And the sampling came with everything... This is mold only, with all the numbers very low. And the people that did this said, "As you can see, this ore count is just measurable in some cases and easily passes a normal fungal ecology condition one. This is a very clean building and especially the classrooms I sampled." In 2018, Biz had a mold study done and Room 8202 was well over 1,000. And during the Christmas holidays at Biz, there was a mold, some work done to get rid of the mold in Biz, but nobody's talking about that. Also, the Echols study on Biz, which some, everyone is so enamored with. Last renovation was 1994, building dates to 1930s. Odd floor plan, difficult to design out, undesirable building issues. Does not allow easy use by persons with physical limitations. Total HVAC replacement needed. Building envelope leaks air and water. Windows need replaced and reduced in number. Leaking pipe insulation. Design issues for security, inefficient lighting, antiquated technology wiring, no real gymnasium, lots of steps and confusing to navigate. Not code compliant railings and stairwells, inefficient windows, no captured entrance, and old emergency generator transfer switch. And the only problems with Northwest had to do with the water and sewage, which is, which was all addressed through Plan Con. That money was there, it was used for other things. I think if the money had been used for that, you'd have a good school, a modern school right now. And again, they're just, like I said, it's... I feel sorry for folks that had sick children there, but I wonder whether it was Northwest error or Southwest Pennsylvania error, which is known to have poor, poor error in this part of the country. I think the root cause for most people wanting to close Northwestern is the teachers. I think that came out clearly in the last couple of board meetings.
I'm sorry, I missed what, what was the?
I said, I believe the cause of, the biggest cause of wanting to close Northwestern is the teachers. They like to be all together in Biz.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just didn't hear what you were saying.
And item two, in all my time here, I have never seen a school district as torn apart as this one is right now. The whole community is fractured. Years gone by, nobody ever heard of Region 1, 2, 3, Patterson. It was Blackhawk. And I think at this point in time, people are pitting one region against the other for one reason or another. In 1980, we had 4,000 students. Now we're down to 2,400 students. We've got a huge debt. We've got projection for 70 students in the next 10 years in this, in this school district. I think this, this board agreed needs to table all the actions regarding future building until complete testing has been done of all the buildings in this school district to see for mold, asbestos, radon, the whole works to see where we are. Until that time, you know, million dollars are going to be spent on a lot of opinion rather than fact. This board needs to step back and assess what their actions are doing to this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Sue Albiini. I'm a taxpayer and I'm a teacher in the district. I taught at Northwestern for 11 years. And I taught with many teachers who are in the audience, who have suffered many illnesses. And if you do want facts, I have a paper right here from the Radon Detection and Control. My PE office had an 8.5 radon level. The nurses' office had a 5.0 radon level. Room 109 had a 6.6 radon level. My office that I sat in for 11 years with no windows. And when they tell you, and you've heard it, that windows were open for testing, there's many people that do have proof of that. You couldn't open my windows because I had no windows. They did put a radon mitigation system in my office. So if you want facts, there is a radon mitigation system in my PE office that I sat in for 11 years. But I sat in it for 10 years without it. Anything over four is dangerous. And after talking with the gentleman who came in to do this, he said to me, "I'm sorry." Because that's all he could say. What can you say? When you talk about mold, I have the same reports. I have a stack of reports. I didn't bring them tonight. But I do have the same one he was just reading. But I have many, 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 many reports about the mold. My gym was closed down for many months and I taught gym in a classroom. The same classroom that was beside my PE office that the Head Start teacher has passed away from lung cancer. That same classroom that another teacher at the age of 58 had also taught in that classroom has died from cancer. We also have a teacher sitting in this audience has taught in that classroom. How do you think we feel? But my gym was closed down and they brought in air purifiers and they brought in scrubbers to help get the mold, the moisture, and the levels out. Some of the storage areas where we stored equipment and the kids were in those areas, they tore out the flooring, they tore out the ceiling. So if you want facts, I have the facts. I have a whole stack of them. Kids complained daily of headaches. They did have dark circles. Teachers, teachers that left the school and went to different schools all of a sudden were better. We're not making it up. We're not just wanting to be in one district or one school building. When the workers would go under the tunnel because we had leaks upon leaks upon leaks and they would come out, because it was in my gym, they were coming out of my storage closet and they would say, "You have more problems than you know underneath this building." Because they kept springing a leak. It's old. But I will, next time, if you would like, bring my staff the papers and the reports because I do have the same, I do, we do have facts. Thank you very much. Hi, good evening. Diane Sarver, BEA President. I'm here to speak on behalf of all of our teachers in attendance tonight and those who could not be here. First of all, maybe you weren't the folks that hired us, but those who came before you saw us as the best and the brightest in the company. And you brought us on. And we bring our professional opinion here. Our professional opinion is not brought to you simply to say, "Let us be in the same building." Our professional opinions are being brought to you because we care about kids, because we care about where we are and what we do. And we are bringing you the most important opinions that we can about what's safe for our kids and what's safe for our staff. We would be neglectful to not bring you that information. Maybe some of us don't live in this district, but we still have a vested interest here. And I can't look out here and see one person that's not committed to this district. And I can't look at one person that I work with and think that any of them would walk away because they've been told if you don't like a hair leave. We're your paid professionals and our opinions are our professional opinions. When you vote on Northwestern, please put personal differences aside and vote on what's best for this district. Thank you.
Hi, guys. I'm Dave Canadian from Eden Valley. I just first want to start off to say thank you, guys, for your dedication of service for the community and for the district. Because I know you guys hear a lot of complaints from everybody. But one of the things I do want to say is, I want you guys to think about the future of where we're at, not the past. I understand all the, a lot of the medical issues, a lot of the problems with the building. It's just been old, dilapidated through the years. It should have been made, maintained, but unfortunately it wasn't. So now, being a board member, it's a problem that you guys are here today. But if you guys, everybody here would mind, if you are an employee for Blackhawk, teacher, doesn't matter what you are, if you stand up for me for a second, please? Just so I can see. Okay, I just want you guys to take a look at everybody standing up in this room right there. Because one of my big concerns with Northwestern is what would happen if we say, "Hey, let's do it," and it turns into an issue such as like Highland. And if you run into a huge deficit. Every person that stood up here today could possibly, in the future, have maybe an issue with the job, say, "Hey, you know, we can't pay the teachers. We have to do furloughs. We have to do cuts. We have to do budgets." Is that something that we really want to take into consideration now? Because again, the decision that you guys make is going to affect every single person who stood for this real material look at. And just so you guys know that whatever decision you make as a district, my wife, myself, my daughter, my family, we support you because that's the district that we live in. But the decision you make will affect every person that just stood up there in front of you. So it's something I really want you to take seriously consideration because, you know, you hear it all the time, the debacle happened at Highland, how much money we spent. We spent well over, well under, all the issues that came up. Again, anytime you run into a huge construction project, it's something you have to have the ability to take. And also, another food for thought, too, once you take these bonds, we start refining. The reality of it is with your refi, what does that mean typically? Yeah, you may save a little bit, but you're pushing the money off because that means you don't have all the money to pay. That's typically why you refi, maybe you make it a little bit shorter, but maybe stay in the term a little bit longer. The choosing would happen. So if we're in such a position to where we have to rob Peter to pay Paul, why do something? Just consider getting rid of it, do what seems to be the best interest for everybody because that's my big concern, that we're going to go ahead and go with the project. But then, the problem is we won't be able to have the battery to finish the project. So thank you again, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Rachel Flynn from Triple H Township. And I will be on the ballot for a seat on the school board in Region 1 in November. As much as it's emotional and difficult to hear the struggles that our staff and children had during the last few years that Northwestern was open, and it is difficult to hear all of that, there are other compelling reasons to eliminate that building from our footprint. In fact, the only arguments that I've heard for the building to remain open, to me, seem largely based on nostalgia. And I understand that. My dad and my aunts all went to Northwestern. We lost my dad tragically about three years ago. And every time I think of that building, I think of him there. So I understand the nostalgia part of that. There have been one or two parents that maybe have come to the meetings that have spoken that they have concerns regarding the length of time their children might be on the bus if Northwestern closes, but I think that that can be addressed. In the course of my candidacy, I've had the opportunity to talk to many people about this building. And I've tried very hard to focus on residents, particularly parents, who reside in South Beaver, Darlington, and Eden. And I have to say that some of you on the board and some of you who are more vocal in our community are not giving the parents in this area enough credit. I have found these... I have found these parents to be most concerned with the quality of education that their children will receive and not the location of the building. Times are different than they were 30 years ago. The way we travel is faster and safer than ever. Families travel further for educational opportunities for their children. We have travel sports teams. Parents drive their children distances for music, acting, and art lessons. We have day camps all throughout the summer where many of us are taking our children from the Blackhawk District to CCBC or Penn State Beaver for wonderful programs. And of course, we have our high school students who travel to these campuses daily to take college-level courses. To say that our Blackhawk parents place a high priority on having neighborhood schools is probably a stretch. You have the perfect opportunity right now to make a decision that is going to give you the easiest course from a PR perspective and ultimately a financial one. And not the least of the great benefits is that consolidating our footprint will make our schools safer and will provide greater opportunities educationally for our children. I honestly cannot understand how any of you could be on the fence about this at this point, and maybe you aren't anymore. But if you are, I do think when the opportunity presents itself, it would be good for the public to hear your reasons. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Leah Zano, and I'm a resident of South Beaver Township. I have a seven-year-old first grader who attends Northwestern at Biz. My husband was diagnosed at 37-years-old with stage IV colon cancer. Now, how does that affect what we're talking about this evening? In many ways, not closing Northwestern at Biz would rip my family apart. My husband, as it is, cannot be exposed to large groups of people, germs, et cetera, because it is a health factor for him. Being diagnosed with stage IV cancer at such a young age is something that we cannot ever, or, I'm sorry, we could have not prevented. It is not something that runs in his family. But subjecting our children to go to a building that would make them sick and the unknown health risk, we can't control that. As a Blackhawk High School, Class of 2000 graduate myself, I know that the district expects excellence, whether it's music, academics, sports. There are even more opportunities now than what were available to me almost 20 years ago. How our students and their teachers are expected to perform optimally whenever they report to a building daily that is jeopardizing their health, I think we need to take a hard look at that. Our children and their teachers, by the way, who in my opinion deserve the highest regard of respect for what they do, should, should not have to think about that whenever they, you know, attend school every day or walk into work. So, like many that have spoke before me this evening, there are facts specifically. If you look within the DEP, there are certain reports that do speak about the lead that is present in the school. Flint, Michigan is making national news even still, and I, I can't understand how that would be acceptable in a, in a place and in a community such as Blackhawk School District. So thank you for the time and listening to my remarks, and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Dean Fleischman, Chippewa Township. On another topic, which was the previous refinancing, I want to make sure that we're clear on something. Those letters, never saw them. Now Kathy, you said you never saw them, and Bonnie never saw them, and Perry never saw them. Doug, you were there. Did you ever see the letters?
I mean, Dean, you're asking me for something that occurred three years ago. I mean, I can't.
Doug, you don't, come on, that's not, you can't say that you don't have, I mean, you're a sharp guy, and one of the sharpest guys I know. You either saw the letters or you didn't.
I, I mean, honestly, if, if I knew with 100% certainty, you know, I would say it. But I knew during that time, there were opportunities, there were discussions, and things just never progressed.
Right.
So, and I.
Because Eric was told not to move forward, which becomes more complicated by the very fact that at the time, Rob was not our superintendent. He was our acting superintendent and thus had no authority to indicate. In fact, I would argue that Eric had greater authority as an employee of the district. Eric was told to stand down, not to move forward, and that's the reality, and that's the truth. And that's something that needs to be understood, because that's what cost us all that money. Because certainly, you have no doubt that if I had seen the letters, there'd have been a whole lot more questions about why aren't we moving forward? Because, Doug, we have those discussions, and it costs us a lot of money, and it may merit a request for investigation on the state level. Because when an existing board has not given the information that it needs, and when they have already taken the steps, we did with Anthony Ditka, in telling him, "We did the vote, and we confirmed with Anthony, we do everything the board was asked to do," and the answer was, "Yes." So the fact that we didn't move forward, and the fact that that went to another individual who had previous association with the superintendent, and, Rob, you can take tape all you want. That's fine, because it's ridiculous. But that's all right. Your father's watching you, and that's what you need to understand.
No.
No, 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 that's important, because he swore on his father's soul before he was hired, and you know, because there was another superintendent that you and I wanted, and we didn't get our option, and they didn't want that person fired. But we never got the letters, he didn't have the authority, and it cost this district a lot of money. So, Rob, I hope you have an explanation at some point, because you have some explaining to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just ask what letter? I was really super confused.
There's, okay, so, and again, this, this is my, my take, and from what I've seen and with timelines. Back in, well, back in June, July, I'm not even sure of the year, 17, 16?
2016, Doug.
2016. I believe at that time, Piper Jaffrey was our bond company or representative. Not sure of the exact terminology. All the information that we got from them said that we were not able to refinance our bonds until November or December. Then, when Dr. Pashipak came onto the board, he had a relationship with vending and scatter in May.
Yes.
And I addressed the board in May.
They came to us and said, "No, your, your bond representative is incorrect. You can do this." But all the letters that we got from them indicated that we could not. So because of that, this is, again, this is my opinion, because of that confusion and the timeline stretching out, you know, we delayed the refinancing until, I believe it was the end of October that year. Interest rates had gone up a little bit, and when we started off in that May-June timeframe, we believed that we could refinance, and we would see savings of somewhere between $800,000 to possibly $1 million. When everything was delayed, and then we finally did the refinancing, we realized the savings of $200-plus thousand. So, and that's where we're at. So, and again, in my opinion, the, you know, interest rates move. We can't predict what they'll do, what they won't do. And in fact, if you were at the meeting last month, when we did the refinancing, obviously there was some, you know, healthy discussion between board members on whether or not we should actually refinance or wait. But, and I lost my train of thought on where I was going with that.
Refinancing $2.3 million?
No, we did that, but, I mean, at the end of the day, we did, oh, we, you know, we realized, you know, over $200,000 in savings instead of a, we lost the opportunity for that. We didn't actually lose money from the school district's, you know, bank account. So that's, that's kind of, you know, again, that's my explanation, my opinion on the timeline and the information that, that I saw.
Good evening. My name is Barb Brown, and I've stood here several times before. I live in Chippewa Township. I work at the Blackhawk School District. I've worked at Northwestern, Patterson, Highland, and now Biz. Tonight, I'd like to speak to you and remind you about some of the numerous reasons Northwestern should be closed. There are a lot of budget-conscious reasons. We really don't need the space right now, and we're not projected to grow much in the next decade. It's costly to maintain. It'll be expensive to renovate. The location is very remote. We will not have equal services for students. We don't have staff to work there, and I don't mean staff that don't want to work there. We physically do not have enough staff to run Northwestern. The projected cost of staffing Northwestern is over $500,000 in year one. That won't get cheaper in year two. There are health-conscious reasons that many people have discussed tonight, because the building is known to have mold, and water, asbestos, radon, ventilation, sewage, electrical, and probably more issues than I can stand here and list. Not to mention both adults and children that have worked or attended school there have had numerous health issues that run the gamut from rashes and headaches to cancer. Tonight, I want you to think about who is most affected by the decisions you will make about Northwestern. The students. The children that attend school in that building are five, six, and seven years old. We send our babies to Northwestern. They trust that adults will do what is best for them. They are babies when they are five, and six, and seven. Would you send your babies there? I know I won't send any more of mine. My personal children that live in the district purposely do not live on the Northwestern side of the district. Think about that. After working in that building, my children all attended school in that building. Two of my own children working in that building, one as a teacher. We made the conscious decision for them not to live on the Northwestern side of the district. Please stand if you believe this district must close Northwestern now. A little something to think about. Our school-wide positive behavior plan includes a picture of a paw print. That paw print, with that paw print, students are reminded every day that they must do their part. P is for persevere, A is to be accountable, R is to be respectful, and T is to be trustworthy. The time has come for you to do your part. We respectfully request that the closing of Northwestern be placed on the October 8th and 15th agenda. We especially respectfully request that a motion be made and voted on to close Northwestern, and that it be taken at the October 15th school board meeting. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other visitors tonight?
Can I just make one comment? Fairly, folks, all right? This will be the last thing I'll ever say about this. I'm lucky, my kids went through Northwestern, nobody got sick. We wouldn't be, we wouldn't be sitting here talking about this if the board had done their job. $850,000, or $8.5 million bond was, in 2015, would have made that a brand-new school. With Echols, have a book this thick on how to fix that school, and what happened to the $8.5 million? $2.5 million went to the stadium, $3 million went to buy out a trade contract that still required trade people to do the work, and $2 million went to the high school roof. There's, there's a million dollars left out there that was supposed to have been spent on Northwestern, never was. And we wouldn't be here talking about this if in 2015, they had done the work, done everything. Echols had everything technically, water, everything was addressed, would have made a brand-new school out of that place. Didn't happen. Money was spent somewhere else.
Thank you.
My name is Melanie Toddovich. You've heard from me before. I know there were a lot of other teachers that were here before then, but obviously not anyone come tonight. A lot of questions still remain, and as Mrs. Brown has beat into our heads and several of the other individuals about cancers of people dying, what types of cancers are they? As Dr. Markozic has picked up, you cannot blame all cancers on what might have been at Northwestern. Any due to hereditary, any due to skin cancers. Smokers, you know there are. There's teachers now that are smokers. Any related to chemicals, chemicals they might have been used to at their homes. You have to know. You know, I work in medical. I've been in medical for 34 years. I see it on a daily basis. Don't laugh, it's serious. It is. You can't pinpoint something you actually don't know. How about all the flooding that's going on at Biz? I've gone past Biz. I have two grandchildren going to school there right now. When they have to have the restoration man come in and suck out the water that's going into the gymnasium there. Is not mold growing underneath there? You don't know. You guys have no idea where mold might be polluted at, or growing behind walls, growing underneath, in teachers' rooms, anything like that. It can be behind walls, hidden, high temperatures can bring up just about most anything. Also, this radon testing, or have all the schools been tested for radon recently? Have they always been tested and, and kept track of, year after year after year? I've not seen anything. I went researching. I also went researching, Patterson was built in '69, Highland was built in '57, remodeled in 2013. Biz was built in 1939. 1939, that was a long time ago. I remember my daughter was playing softball for Chuck D and Gore. At that time, Biz was closed. It was condemned. It was closed. We were allowed to use the gymnasium to hold a 21-family garage sale. It was appalling what we went into, and we had to straighten up in order to be able to do that. They allowed us and permitted us to have. We did that for five years. After that five years, I'm not sure when it was remodeled and brought up to date, but there was a lot of money that was dumped into that school to bring that up, only to go through Mr. Echols to find out that it's not the best ideal place. It isn't in any way, shape, and form. I tutor there now with a little Bure lines club. I go there on a weekly basis, have been doing it, and I also did it at Northwestern for 15 years. I have an aunt and a aunt-in-law marriage that have worked in Northwestern for 30, 35 years. In the cafeteria, no signs of cancer there with any of them. You can't pinpoint that. Northwestern was built in 1955. So you look at Northwestern in '55, Highland in '57, Biz in '39. You know, you talk about having things assessed for evaluation. When you're doing this, assess your property values, find out what's your best way to go. I just, I don't understand. I just, I don't understand where all you're going, honestly. I'd like to know how many lead pipes are coming into the schools? You have no clue about it. You don't do it. More importantly, the Beaver Falls Water Authority would have the knowledge of that. So, has any of those been replaced? Has the water been checked at each location? And if so, how often has it checked? Do you have a way to handle the city water if it's polluted and bad? Is there any plans on that? Has it ever been checked and ever come up with high pollutants in it? I know my well at home, I have my well water checked about every two years. Dillon Well Drilling comes and checks it. I have no problems with it. Ambulance service. Now let's think about this. An ambulance service trying to get to Northwestern from, we got Northwest ambulance service, we also have medic rescue. You go straight down 51, off, onto 168, and three times, four times, you're there. You try to go through from Chippewa to Highland Middle School on that two-lane highway at any given time, after a soccer game, during school government school, when buses are coming up, or you try to get to Biz, or you try to get to Blackhawk. You got bottleneck after bottleneck after bottleneck. You consider Northwestern world, what do you consider this high school? This high school's world also. So if anybody wants to stop and think about it, I think you need to think a lot of ways around. Wi-Fi service can be put into Northwestern without a doubt. When money is being spent to update, you're going to update all the way around. You're just not going to update certain things and leave the rest go. It's the only school that has a full gymnasium, other than our high school here. It's the only school that has a full football field that was completely outfitted until bleachers were taken away from it. You know, you think about it, that's, that's very rich for us to have. And I guarantee if Mr. Miller or Mr. Hamilton was still here, these hearings would not be happening. These discussions would not be happening, because those are backbone foundations. When you see that roster outside, when you drive in this, this facility here, of all those records, they occurred when they were here. Since they haven't been here, now they're doing away with different facilities. Oh, I see those records not going to be expanding anytime soon. We talked about CAC. The CAC, there are several members, I wonder if it is an excuse too? Because several members, when we're sitting on this school board right now, are on that committee. So, oh, I'm sure they are. So how have you twisted any of those results? Makes you wonder. This is another one thing I want to also, I went researching. There are pensions. All these teachers pay 7.5% into their teacher, into their salaries, or into their pensions, excuse me. On a yearly basis, the amount of pension funding that has to come out is more than what is being put in on an average yearly basis. So, now this year, we're going to have, or next year, have taxes going up, and it's better stress on the families, because we're taking out these, these grants, and we're doing this remodeling and addition and so on and so forth. So that's going to be more money coming out of the school district, which is more money out of the taxpayers who support that. So we're doing it now first, supposedly for this remodeling, addition, whatever you want to call it. So then, how many years down the road, when the nucleus of all these teachers go to start retiring? How much pressure are you going to put on the public at that point in time? You don't have it. They don't have it. Our grandchildren, their grandchildren are going to be paying for this. It's not right. It's not right at all. You need to think about more than just what is on the table right now. We talked about cyber school. Mr. Postapac said last meeting that $1 million a year Blackhawk puts out for cyber schooling. My daughters went to school here in the 90s, and my son also. There was no money put out for cyber school then. I guess cyber school didn't exist then. But, yes, I have said that. And bullying is occurring to this day. I had a granddaughter last year being bullied. I have a grandson this year being bullied. Thank you to Mr. T, perhaps to put a squelch on my grandson being bullied. My grandson is a very tall young man, who, who is very kind-hearted, but yet again, he's very big for his size. He has no control over it. I think bullying with a lot of the cyber schooling going on is because of bullying. You have bigger issues you need to take care of than to worry about putting new schools in. As we know, the population is going down in our students. From when my kids went in, they had graduating classes of 230 to 250. Right now, second grade, I figured out that my granddaughter's in, might make 140 or 150. That's a hell of a drop, 75 to 100 students. You need to think about how you're taxing your citizens, your public, because our children, our grandchildren, their children, they aren't going to be around to handle it. And I don't know if everybody seems to think their jobs are secure. They aren't. You can be asked any day, any given time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Adam Denzongia. I live in Chippewa. The one thing I found funny is, so I'm, I'm part of the CAC committee, and I'll tell you right now that there is no influence of, of the board members that are part of the committee that, you know, on the results. They're there just like everyone else to do the work and find out what's best for the students and best for the district. All of the arguments that I've heard from the nice lady who was up before me, it just sounded like a lot of arguments to go down to one building, because you mentioned three different schools that have various problems, various problems with, with our population dropping for the, the student body. Those are arguments to go to one building. So that's the only thing I would say.
Do we have any other visitors this time? Do you mind just letting the woman behind you go first, since she hasn't had an opportunity yet?
You know, it must have been one sentence.
Correct me if I'm wrong. State pensions are state law. Correct?
State pensions are state law.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kimberly Brunson. I'm a resident of Chippewa. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but I feel like I do need to say this. I am an alumni of Blackhawk, very proud of it. I moved away after I graduated from IUP with my bachelor's in nursing and went to South Carolina. I brought my family back from South Carolina to Blackhawk. I made sure when we moved back here that would not have had my children zoned Northwestern. My niece and nephew had gone to Northwestern. They are now college graduates and in college sophomore year. When they were in Northwestern, they were always sick. The minute they left Northwestern and went to Biz, Highland, and this high school, they never once had issues. I am also a substitute nurse in this district. I have worked in every building in this district. I have never had issues with headaches, except when I subbed at Northwestern. These are just personal facts that I have seen through my family, and what I have experienced, and knowing everything else that I am hearing from the reports. I plead, and I'm not saying this because I get nothing from the district or pensions or anything like that, because I am a sub. Please, close Northwestern. Thank you.
All right, we'll move on. Administration?
No.
Good.
Sir Paul.
Molly. Anything you'd like to add tonight? I kind of get you on the right. That woke me up real quick. All right. I don't blame you. All right, school directors. I know, I want Dr. Nikozin to go first, he had asked to say something.
I'm going to speak to Northwestern, give you some background. I'm going to have a proposal at the end that I think meets both sides of the law. First of all, I've been in practice 34 years. I have two practices. A little over a year ago, I sold one of the commercial property. To say, make it simplification that you've just gone to close Northwestern, forget about it, it's not, it's just not going to happen. I suppose for argument's sake, you go to sell that property. Commercial property, someone's going to come up, and you are going to have to pass inspections for your wiring, your heating and ventilation, they're going to touch your wire, they're just going to give it the whole runaround, because I have to go through. So, to make the statement that, hey, just close it, forget about it, that's just not going to happen. Secondly, I have a problem closing it with the fact that we're going to walk away from 1.5 million in plant con money. That's, that's, you're my taxpayer, and I just can't toe that down the drain. Also, I asked for attendance records for the last year that all the buildings were empty. The sickest building is right here, this high school, with 783 odd entities. Northwestern had, Northwestern combined with Patterson had 548. Between Biz and Highland, it's like 537, 545. So there's negatives between Biz, Northwestern Patterson, and Highland. High school here had 783. As far as the headaches are concerned, I hear you, but I've also heard enough stories from enough people that it wasn't a building, it was a road, a employee, someone took a, fired up a diesel factory inside and enclosed garage out of Northwestern, fumes of ventilation. Of course, you're going to have headaches from it. Regarding the cancers, I've been in practice, like I said, 34 years. I see maybe three or four suspicious lesions a year. Before you, regardless of what I feel it looks like, before you make that diagnosis, you have to take a biopsy. You look at it underneath the microscope. That diagnosis is made at the cellular level. Amazingly, in those 34 years, I, like I said, probably happens three to four years, so there's well over 120 that have had suspicious lesions. Out of those, I have maybe eight malignancies. Amazingly, there's a teacher here who claims there was 25 of them out there. So I would love to hear. I heard biopsy reports. Basically, there's something called basal cell layer, which separates the acedurne from the endodene. When you have a malignancy, nucleic within an individual cell greatly expand, it basically eat up the space within the cell. Sometimes it's like two nucleic in a single cell. To make a diagnosis for a malignancy, that has to spread and break through that, quote, basal layers. So I would love to see those biopsies. If you've got 25 cancers, they should all be the same. One lady here, I believe, is this lady down here in front, who infects influenza. Okay, I buy that, but that's also, that's a virus. Virus is mutated. I would like to know, we have, we have someone here who claims they're a nurse, I would like to know if you could take cultures from all these sick people. That's the only way you're going to prove that the building is sick. How the heck do you know whether you're not touching these, this virus from someone else? An influenza is a communicable disease.
You're going to send people back to get sick again so we can test?
Wait, what's that? I can't hear.
I said, are we going to send people back to the schools so we can take cultures?
Well, you're going to come, you're coming here, and you're making an accusation, and you haven't proved anything.
My kids haven't been in the school. My kids haven't been in the school.
But there's people coming here, okay, I'm going to see proof. I'm going to see, justify proof, medical proof.
If you're a medical professional, then I think you also understand that these families have rights to hit the law, or they don't have to provide you with anything.
That's right. You're going to make an accusation, you're going to make an accusation that's going to be medically signed. We have, we have our, Mr. Emples here. A year ago, myself and Mrs. Betaglia specifically asked him, look at the video from March of 2018. We asked him specifically about Northwestern. He gave us, basically, Queen Miller Health. Basically stated it was, he gave us the best, best bang for the buck. Regardless, all right, regardless.
Let him speak.
Yeah, let him speak. Yeah, really, tell me how many biopsies you've borne in the last 34 years.
Listen, let's just keep this civil. The board members were not arguing with everybody when you guys were speaking, so please give the board members the same courtesy that we had given to you.
All right, all I'm asking is, okay, let's have, let's test all the buildings. If indeed there are viruses running around in Northwestern, then that changes things. If the air is unhealthy, that changes things. Test them all. Let's, let's see where we stand. You know, regarding like lead pipes, as I was saying, these were all cast iron pipes, like God. You didn't have water room for several years. Of course, it's not going to pass. So I'd like to see what the truth is. I just make innuendo, because you have a personal bias one way or the other. I will say this, we do not have the money for any construction project at this moment. So, I'll rest my case. I feel for all you people that are here that have had illnesses in your family. I do. My children both went there, all through school. They never had an issue. Whether they were healthy or not, I thank God. But, that was then, and we are not. We've had tests after test after test. From 2015, when Emples did the first study, to 2018, we did the CAC study. Since then, there's been tests on everything in that building. What you people do not understand is, when they do a makeover of the building, everything that you people have talked about, that the mold, the asbestos, the air conditioning, if you look, what was presented to us in those studies, basically, that building will be completely redone. New plumbing, where your water comes from, the wells, the heating, your air conditioning, the asbestos abatement, which encompasses taking the asbestos out of that building. There's buildings all across the tri-state area that you have been in and go in every day, that at one point in time, they had asbestos, and those buildings were abated, and there's people going in and out of them now, and you can't say that that building because it had issues 30 years ago, that when you do a makeover, you're going to have that issue today. That is the whole idea of redoing the building. That was set in 2015 and 2018. All that stuff would be ramified, taken care of. Now, what I don't understand is, Mr. Esposito, we disapprove him for another thing. His company is very educated and knowledgeable of these tests, and he was involved with these tests and so forth that were done 15 and now. And he can speak on that as far as they have all passed, other than the water issue that we've had recently. Now, once everything is redone, we will not have this issue. And for the fact that Mr. Markozic said, as far as the plant con money we are going to lose, and you people keep forgetting, right now, we have still a bond on that building out there. You can do whatever you want with it, but guess what? The taxpayers are still going to pay, that 1.2, 1.4 million is still owed on that bond. So between the 1.2 and 1.4 million, plus the 1.2 million of plant con, there's 240-some million.
million dollars you're going to curl away. If that's what you want to do, fine, but listen to Mr. Esposito, and he will explain to us what, what the tests proved, and then make, make a decision. Mr. Esposito, another finisher, can he give you his thing?
I would say that Echo's architecture did not perform any test on the building. They subcontracted that test to a company called PSI, I believe.
Yes.
PSI test results are on the CAC website. I believe the former results and the current results are all available on there. I don't know that Echo's architecture could speak to the results, because they're not experts in that field. But they did, we had their company provide the service to get the experts to test it, and then the results are published.
I remember at previous meetings, Dr. Focaccio, you made the comment that you would not put another child in that building, or anything of that nature, until that building, all the tests were made, and they were all positive. And they were all, came back, and they were all positive. So now, what is the issue? If we're going to, we can do the makeover, why would we not have a perfectly sound building? And it's a lot lower than 1939.
I don't know what you want me to answer.
My question was, did you not say that at, at previous meetings?
You have a decision to make October 8th or 15th, on whether you will remain, of course, to use Northwestern as part of your educational programming, or you will shut that building down, and not expend any more funds in that portion of your footprint. That's a decision that this board has to make. I don't make that decision.
No, no, I didn't say that. I asked a question to you. Was that not one of the things you said when we were doing this test, that you would not ?
You want a professional comment from me?
Yes, sir.
My professional comment is, if that building had one person sick, and you put people back in it, shame on all of us, and I should never make that recommendation.
You still didn't answer his question.
The answer to the question is, I don't care what the results were. I know that there's human fecal matter in the football field. It was shut down for that reason. It wasn't there, it wasn't there, read the report, it was in the newspaper. There's not one school district that we play, that will play on that football field. WMBI would not let a team report that. They will not report to that field. If we knew that an opposing team had a field that had fecal matter in core samples, we would say we will not play on that football field.
I've never said anything about the football field.
Well, that's part of the school. That's part of the ground. If you are going to expend anywhere from 15-plus million dollars, all you're going to do is repair the fractured infrastructure. You will not improve education in the school district. But you will spend 15 million dollars in repairing a fractured situation, that currently we do not use, that is not required, and we are not spending any more than 70-plus thousand a year to maintain it. Your decision is, do you want to spend 15 million on a building we don't need, and the taxpayers don't need to pay for? And you do nothing, and determine when your finances are going to be in check. Look back when I was hired, May 30th, 31st, 2016, I was introduced to the board. Please look at the minutes. I had three goals. Goal one, get your finances in order. You had $200,000 in your fund balance. Goal two, get the kids moved out of Northwestern, because they had closed it due to a lot of community concern. Goal three, look at refunding your current debt, you can make money. For anyone to say that something was withheld is ridiculous. There is email after email that says you better refund. In fact, they were talking about refunding before I arrived, in March of 2016. All I did was offer opportunity that continued to get pushed down the road for other personal agendas. I fought through that, they made 200-plus thousand. The current refinancing made 2.32 million. They currently have 4.6 million in fund balances. This year, they're going to make another 1 million estimated, plus the 2.3. If my job was to improve the finances to 7 million from 200,000 in four years, I'm okay with my job. I'm not going to have anybody call me up, I'm not going to have anybody disparage my father, because they have personal agendas. The private meetings that go on in this school district that none of you know about are appalling. The PSBA would be appalled at it.
Yes.
I'm not going to do that. If you still want, and if it costs me my job, so be it. Don't dump another dime in a building you don't use, you're wasting money, you don't need it. Stay where you are, and don't spend any money. That'd be like buying another home that you don't need. My professional opinion, don't spend any money. I don't care what profession, don't care. Don't spend money. Everybody says they want to get their finances in order. Get them in order. That's my job. I shouldn't have said that, I'm sorry, I apologize. That was unprofessional, I apologize.
Thank you, Dr. Postacca. I'm just going to say this right now, is I was not in support of Dr. Postacca coming on the board. I was not on the board. Since I have gotten to know him, since I have worked with him, I am convinced that this district, he definitely would do good things. He has done good things. He would not do anything intentionally to harm the district, that just seems silly.
My job is to make sure you got a good school district. Look, teachers aren't going to like this. You have less teachers than when I got here.
You know this story, yes.
Yes, you do. You have less teachers, you have a gifted program you didn't have, you have a technology program you didn't have, you have a better special ed program than when I got here, you have a dyslexia program that all the administrators, not me, they all started. You have a better title program, they started it. I just support them. You have a better facility to play your sports in. That's all because they're allowed to do their jobs. My only job is to make sure they have the ability to do theirs, and they do a great job for the school district. These administrators deserve a lot. And you can be a bad manager, he does a great job in the office financially. He's the reason we were able to put that money together. I don't do that alone. I have a whole office staff. I have Barb, Nancy, Eric, Chris, and all of them.
Yes, well, yes, the other thing, I mean, just to, to kind of piggyback off of that, is, um, the last two budget cycles, even though it has been tough, Dr. Postacca has worked really hard with his administration to make no cuts during the budget. Um, I really think that that speaks volumes. Um, there were several instances whereby, as a parent, not just a board member, we're like, okay, you know, are we going to replace this staff member? Are we going to do this? This would be a time, you know, possibly a cut could happen. And he replaced people. He has grown, you know, he's dedicated to growing our program. So I really want to thank him for that, right off of that. And I don't know if I want to put you on the spot, Mr. Esposito, but I did this at one other meeting. The last facility study that was done, would you verify that the main focus was remodel Northwestern or close Northwestern, period? Yes, if you wouldn't mind, just because I wanted to make sure. That would have been the previous board, and if the focus was on Northwestern only.
When we were hired, we were hired with the direction that we were to do a needs assessment of Northwestern. Now, a needs assessment is different than a feasibility study. A needs assessment looks at shortcomings, and identifies them, and then, you know, identifies remedies, estimates costs. When we were, when it became apparent that the corporate administration was going to institute the more, the first moratorium on plant con, there was a deadline set, and it made sense to submit a, uh, Part A, to get in before the deadline, so that you would be eligible for reimbursement.
And that, that vote actually came literally the day before that moratorium was set. Is that correct? There was a special meeting called?
It was right under the wire.
One day. Yes, thank you.
Okay, so in order to do that, and meet the state's policies and guidelines, that needs assessment had to be converted into a district-wide feasibility study. So, we did that, we supplied a document that met the guidelines, and was compliant with the department, and you became eligible for reimbursement for Northwestern. There's a couple of things that have been talked about, I'll take this opportunity while I have the microphone.
Yes, thank you.
We are not a testing lab. We don't do testing. The district asked us if we could put together requests for proposal from certified licensed testing labs, and we did that, and the district hired PSI, Professional Service Industries. They used to be a company by the name of Pittsburgh Testing Lab. They're now a national company. They do tests all over the country. They came and tested a variety of things in that building. Mold, radon, air quality, volatile organic compounds, lead in the drinking water, the wells were tested, the soil was tested out on the football field. Those tests were all done by independent licensed testing laboratories, and the results, as Dr. Postacca said, are on your website. When I read those, uh, reports from those, uh, testing that was done, I saw nothing that they found that was, I would say, remarkable, or, uh, there were no red flags in the testing. Everything was within accepted standards. That building, if you choose to save it and reuse it, uh, requires pretty much every system, HVAC, plumbing, electrical, uh, the data and communication systems, all those systems need replaced. There's asbestos in the building, particularly in the pipe tunnels, that should be removed. Floor tile, that, all of that's been tested also by a testing laboratory, and identified. If all of that was done, at whatever cost that would be, um, the issues that might plague that building should be eliminated, um, short of that, you know, what we know, unless there's some mysterious thing that no one knows. But all the experts have tested it, and it is tested within normal limits. The structure's sufficient, the building has sufficient, uh, floor area, um, it could be used as a school, if that suited your needs for your educational program. That's not, you know, something that we determine, that's something the board will have to determine. But the, the actual physical structure of that building is not compromised, the roof is, uh, not brand new, but not old either. In fact, you're still paying money on it. And, and, uh, it has other components that need replaced, windows, energy-wise, it's not, it's a 1955 building, it's not modern. And if you spent enough money to upgrade it, you could address all those issues, and it would provide continued use for, for years. But it would require that those issues be addressed. And that is another decision, do you want to invest that type of money in that building to use it, for that or to upgrade it? So, I know it's a tough decision, um, but that's a pretty truthful explanation of what's up with that building. And it's up to you, the study's identified, um, multiple options beyond reusing Northwestern, and you need to really think about what is going to serve you best going into the future.
Yes, sir, appreciate that. Going off of that, so the CAC, I just want to, um, remind everybody that we actually advertised to the community, um, our goal was to get members from each of the regions, so they could get parts of the committees, and the goal was that every single sitting board member serve on a committee. There were 30 to 40 residents that served on different committees, we met for over nine When I talk about Northwestern, if you rewind to a couple of years ago, I would have talks with teachers, I was never one of the people that subscribed to, it's a sick building. I would say, okay, so what, you don't have air conditioning, big deal, right? I mean, I worked there too. I mean, I, I was, I said things like that to people, we had discussions. So I went into the CAC with an open mind. I felt like, convince me, you know, why we need to close it or remodel it, et cetera. I, I had an open mind. Throughout the CAC process, it became very apparent to me that we need to minimize our district footprint, for financial costs especially, um, for, for just educationally, that one of the committees I served on was the pedagogy and learning committee, and we did a lot of studying on the effects it has to have K through 2 in one building, and K through 2 in another building, and having two completely different educational experiences, um, the shared services that can occur, the, um, educational, um, meetings that can ha, that can happen between teachers, so they can team teach. All of that convinced me without a doubt, and is why I made the motion to have the hearings regard, the hearing regarding Northwestern. I made that motion. At the end of the CAC meeting, I saw the recommendations, I have an idea of what I think the district should do, and I made that motion. Since that time, the letters that I've received, the people that have come to these meetings and told me about their children that were so sick, and that when they left that building, they were not sick anymore, teachers, and I do know some of the teachers that have passed away, maybe their cancers weren't all the same, but to me, that does not matter. To anybody I ever said that I don't believe in the sick building thing, that I don't think it's that big of a deal, I apologize. Because now, not only do I think that the building needs to be closed financially, because it's the best thing, but I don't ever want to see another kid in that building, or teacher that is in this district work there again. All three of my children are there, and I hope the heck none of them ever get some form of cancer that maybe was caused by that building, and we have no idea. I, I don't care what the tests say either, I don't want anybody back in that building. I would like it demolished. Thank you.
Any other school directors?
Yeah. Yes. May I ask?
Yes.
Okay, to the lady who came with the DEP last week, I was shocked, okay? I went online, I appreciate you sending it to Melissa, Melissa's putting it out. What I discovered, because the last four or so years, we are paying companies to test that water, I'm wondering, were they lying to us? They kept telling us it was okay. Were they lying to us? Well, after speaking with them, I myself did not, someone did, they said, when the DEP comes to test, if they cannot get in the building, you're automatically cited. When I looked at all of those dates, they were all on the same date, many of them. And that's why there were so many. They could not get in to test the water. The man I spoke to said, the water at the well, not in your building, the pipes are old, I have an old house, I know it, but at the well itself, that water is probably better than the city water you're drinking right now. But, first of all, I'll, secondly... But first of all, I'll quit it. Secondly, all of you parents that have had children ill in there, I do believe every word you say. And I don't think it's something that happened relatively in the last so many years. I think it started back in the seventies when they moved ex-sciencers out of there to the high school. They used that room for a garage. It should've never been used as a garage. There, there's been many things, not just one tractor. There's been many things. Lawn mowers, everything else stored in there, gasoline, paint. And it was in proximity by the hall to the building. And I am, why did it take so long for all this to come out? I think it started a long time ago. And yeah, the school was sadly neglected. That there's just no two ways. My feelings are to do nothing right now. I hate to slam the door shut because we do need to test all the other buildings, especially Biz. I don't care for the Biz building. It's three floors. It's hard. If you have to get the children out of there in a hurry, I don't care for that.
We did it in nine twenty minutes.
Mrs. Gary, may I just respond to what you said about the DEP report?
Yes.
Okay, so there's a contact person at the local DEP office. Her name is Sheila Schaefer. That's who actually does the testing. I tried to reach out to her this week, but she's in Harrisburg. So, after sharing information, obviously, I mean, I'm, I'm not a water expert. I have no idea. I'm just good at navigating public records. I reached out to her to try and find, to get an explanation for people to bring back and say, you know, yes, and obviously, it can be fixed. We all know that. But to me, the public notification piece is the, the most alarming part, is all of the issues with the lack of public notification, which would make sense if you have, you know, a second or a third party doing your testing, and they're not reporting to the district, or whomever they're reporting to is not being proactive to alert all of us in the area. I can understand that, but to me, I get that there's going to be lead. I understand that there's issues. But to not probably notify makes me distrust the process. So what makes me believe that if we can do what Mr. Bataglia talked about, if we can completely make this school brand new, how am I going to trust the process? And I think that's where the struggle is for most of us. We're not arguing it's not fixable. We're arguing that we, we don't feel like we can trust the process. But I absolutely have a request to Sheila Schaefer at the DEP and see if she can provide further clarification on as to, you know, is that true? Is that accurate? Because she is the second person that did the physical water testing there. So I'm trying to find more information.
I appreciate that, okay. Because, um, who was it? My company, GLA. GLA is the company that we were working with for years. And we never doubted them. We had no reason to doubt them. Now, remember, the school has been empty for three years. So, whatever happened before that, I don't know who did the testing before we hired the GLA and all the other ones. If it was employees. Okay. And a person who was the custodian there did it.
Jim Merlich had the license to go off of, but Andy seems to be still in the testing.
Okay.
So that would make sense why there was no information passed in the DEP before 2015, because there's not necessarily a-
I, I need to, I need to speak up there. There, there have been numerous violations over the past four years. There have been no students in the building since 2016. So, no student or adult has ever been exposed to any waters. There are signs posted at every, we toured the building within the last week. There are signs posted at any area that potable water could be obtained. And prior to my coming here, they have all been removed by the company now. The students were drinking out of hole or type of water. They were not drinking the water out of the building. So, for the past at least four years, no student or adult has been exposed to any of the water for consumption in that building. What we have been trying to do is maintain the water permit so that the district could make a decision. Maintaining the water permit has turned into numerous violations requiring us to turn the permit into the seasonal permit that we now have. So the water will be turned off and drained, the entire system cleaned by the end of October, and then that will not be returned back on until sometime in late March, April. Mr. Fleishman has been here two years, Darren? Two years, and he has been working closely with Sheila. There's been meetings with our attorneys and Darren in Pittsburgh to maintain this permit. We, we literally have dumped tens of thousands of dollars into the system to get to this point today. So I just wanna make it clear to everyone, there have been dozens of lead and other particulate violations. But at no time was any student or adult ever exposed to drinking that because the building has remained empty and not used for any educational programming at all. So I, I do wanna make that clear. We have been maintaining a permit, not trying to use the water as actual consumption. And Sheila's been great to work with. She's, she's done a good job, but look, the DEP is the DEP. And we have to post. If there's anybody on the property, we have to notify them. So we do that. If you go to the building front entrance, you see the postings. So they are there. It's just nobody goes there.
Can you just clarify that? None of these violations were received-
I've only been here since it's been closed. I don't know what happened prior to May of 2016. But I do know prior to May of 16, the students were not drinking out of that water, nor were they using it, I believe. They had brought in another company to provide water at the sources for student consumption, and I'm assuming that was cafeteria-
Can I just, can I just ask, Fred, did you find contamination prior to the building being closed?
The most recent report that I saw in 2015, and someone corrected her wrong, because I did not memorize the test.
Correct.
But it was, there was issues with failure to test, which I would imagine is why-
That would've been why, but that also would've been why, I believe, they, they put the water systems in for student consumption because they were having issues with that system. And everybody knows, old pipes, old solder, pipes deteriorate, particulates float, the sinks won't work, they're not filtered, and the filters that are in them, they get the water out, it clog. So the district was proactive in putting in other potable water so that it was safe for all students. Now, that was prior to me getting here. Those were in when I got here. So that had been going on for a period of time. So, any violation that was in the 15, 16 school year moving on, they were addressing that as a district. And, and, and the people were aware of it. But the last four years, like I'm saying, nobody's been there anyway, and it has been posted and notified. And I, and I'm sure Sheila will work with you on that. Yes?
I just would like to say that I worked in that building in the cafeteria when those filters were put in.
Right.
We did not use those filtered waters to cook that children's food.
Like I said, I wasn't here. I don't know, but I do know that they had it in. I don't know how it was managed, but they were being proactive with that. At least at that time, because they understood there were violations. So I do know that.
And I know you weren't here before, but no one told me, working in there, that cleaning and making pots and pans of that water that I fed my own children had lead in it, so I gave my kids-
Yeah, I can't speak to that unfortunately, but-
I can, because I did it. And I live with that.
Right.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, no, bro, thank you. I, I just don't want people to leave with the idea that we're using that building to, for water supply. We are not. So I just want people to be aware that we're trying to maintain a permit at this point in time.
Any other, any other school directors?
I have a comment I forgot to mention before. I've had people in my district that would like, if it's possible, to take a, a walk around inside one question because they're concerned. I mean, they're, they want to score, but they would like to see how bad it is.
I, I can report. I, I, you know what? I'm glad that question came up. Myself, along with all the administration and Mr. Fleishman, we walked the building last Friday? Last Friday. I'd like to report that other than being closed up all summer long, I found it to be in the same condition, and in fact, better, because Darren has spent some time with his staff. The halls were all cleaned out. Everything was stacked cleanly. There was no trash in the building. There was no evidence of things falling apart, ceilings falling down. It looked like it needed a summer cleaning to be prepared. And look, I'm not gonna sit here and lie and say that it's a disaster, and it is not. I mean, we walked through the building and we were pleasantly surprised that it wasn't, I thought it would be much warmer last Friday morning. It was not. And it has been closed up all summer.
What about the gym floor?
The gym floor was fine. No warping. The locker rooms were fine. So I just wanna say, you know, I don't wanna paint a picture. There's not, you know, things growing in corners and all this stuff. Now, did we get up in the ceilings? No. Did we get down into the basement? No. The boiler doesn't work. It's been down for years. You know, that, we didn't get into the bones of that, but just the physical walking through. Like, there's carpeting in the office. It wasn't like it stunk so bad we couldn't breathe in. So, you know, we did walk through because we knew that we wanted to be able to give an accurate opinion of what it currently sits like. And it does sit that way. I'm sorry, sir.
I guess, Scott, one question, maybe two. I started a bull dancer. Number one, I was here before when I said use a D9 bull dancer, right?
Yes, you were.
Okay, I got a question. Do we need the school?
No. You currently have not had a, for you, for school year.
It's almost my bedtime.
I know. Ask the mind to-
Number two, do we have $20 million to spend on that school?
No.
Nobody has $20 million to spend on anything, just to spend.
Then why are we wasting all this time?
We're not wasting time. Sunny, we're not wasting time. We're making a decision whether to close it or just leave it sit. If we do not close it, if we don't- May I finish? If we don't close it, it just sits there, and we don't shut off all our options. What if something happens at Biz worse than we can imagine, and we've got to get the kids out of there? They'll fill this auditorium in every place they can.
You know what you ought to do?
Biz is not that good.
You know what you ought to do? Put six classrooms dead, the middle. Put a gymnasium, close Biz out there, close Bats. Put everything right here, you got a baseball field, and you do nothing. Build a new school there.
We need you in the CAC, sir.
All right, any other school directors?
Yeah, I have one other thing.
Yes.
To change the subject, can I? Darren, how's the truck business coming along?
Very, it's very fine. Thank you.
Okay.
Is it red?
It's red.
We're gonna have a class now.
We were gonna have Black Hawk signs on it.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Will it get to sit in the garage?
I tried to leave nothing outside. You can see that when you drive by the shop that virtually nothing-
I just only see those two vans way back.
Whatever's oldest will sit outside if I don't have room.
When do we get it, Darren?
Okay, okay. That's okay, Darren. It's all right. That doesn't even help me hearing that.
Whatever's oldest will sit outside if I don't have room to have everything inside. So I've got some old equipment that the weather's not gonna beat it to death any further than it's already been beat to death. So, the newest equipment obviously will be inside.
Thank you.
When do we get it, Darren? When is it gonna be delivered?
I don't have a date. I've been in contact with the guy from Wilson with Ford, and he hasn't given me a date. It's at the outfitter. It's, it's being outfitted right now.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other school directors?
Oh, wait. Maybe I shouldn't bring this up. Are we going to address our new business manager somewhere in the future?
That'll be discussed in the next session, Personnel Matters.
Thank you.
Yep.
We gonna be allowed to take a look through the school then, Rob or not?
At this point, I would suggest we do not visit the school because it's really closed educational programming and things like that. If you wanna contact Darren's office and I, I, at this point, the board makes the decision. If the board would like to visit the school, I think that's an excellent idea. But I don't know the community members visiting the school to come up front and, and make comments one way or the other is gonna be a productive situation. If the board makes the decision and the board wishes to visit, certainly they should contact Darren and make a convenient time for as many that can be there at that time. Yes?
I'd like to make a motion this time, at least the whole board and administration, well, the administrator already did. I think the whole board should-
You don't need a motion. You can do that.
They said, just contact Darren.
Just contact Darren. He will make an appointment for you to visit the school. What I'm asking is Darren will send you all an email saying, here's some opportunities, some times that seem convenient. I would hate to have them make nine different visits. If we can group people together, it's just easier. So, yeah, please. Darren, could you coordinate a visit for the board, send an email maybe tomorrow, asking what availability they have? In fact, Missy, maybe you could do a doodle for that? Missy's somewhere in the audience.
She's back there.
Okay. There she is. Could we doodle that tomorrow to the board, please? Thank you.
You look like the one Pitt's had at Beaver Stadium. I'm a Pitt guy, so I can make- All right, any other school directors? All right, our next meeting will be on October 8th, 2019, right here at the High School Auditorium at 7:00 PM. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Ms. Morrison. Second, Mr. Jones. All in favor? We are adjourned.